I'd like to call the May 2, 2023, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the Board of Commissioners at our meeting this evening. I wanted to announce that any members of the public who utilize the county's parking facility or public transportation to attend and access the meeting this evening can get validation for your parking or transportation from one of the sheriff's officers who is with us this evening. All right, we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on our consent agenda? Does any member of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the agenda as published?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we now come to public comment. And let me review the process for public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board of Commissioners is three minutes. You'll get an orange light when you have about 30 seconds left and a red light when your time's up. And we do ask that members who are speaking to the Board discontinue their comments after your time's up because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during the public comment period. This is the public's chance to speak to the Board. We do have a sign-up sheet. I'm going to go through the folks who have signed up, but if anybody else wants to address the commissioners during public comment, there'll be an opportunity to do that once we've gone through the list. First person that signed up is, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name, I think it's Michael Reynolds? Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. All right, yeah, so we are having a public hearing on the cryptocurrency mining issue. So if you want to address the Board on that matter, I would suggest we hold that until we get to the public hearing on that. So thanks for flagging that, Lamar. DeeDee Stiles. I believe all the other folks who signed up are all interested in speaking on the cryptocurrency mining issue.
At your meeting at the East Asheville Library, Mr. Whiteside said he wished more people would come here to speak. As I had already been planning to talk about that sometime, I told him I would speak about it today. People have a combination of various reasons, but all of the people I have tried to encourage to come and speak about what is important to them have one reason in common, along with some different minor reasons, like they're at work at meeting time or they have to be home fixing supper for their children. And the reason in common, they say they don't come because they don't have money, and they believe that the only people who get what they want are the people with money. And why do they think that? Here are a few examples. There's a man who lives up in the back of Grovemont. Two 16-inch water lines carrying water to Asheville pass under his property. He is not allowed to build anything over the pipes, but he can put his garden there. But a developer was allowed to put a road over the pipes and develop the mountainside behind the man's property. Now, the runoff from the high-end homes up there often ruined the man's garden with muddy water and silt. Another example, a man applied to have his lot rezoned from R2 to R3 so he could move his elderly father's trailer to his property so he could look after him. This required a public hearing at a planning board meeting. At that hearing, a lady whose nice new house was down a lane that ran by the property in question said she didn't want her friends to have to drive by a trailer on their way to visit her. Several other people with money also spoke against the rezoning. The rezoning was denied. There were similar rezonings at the planning board that turned out the same way. I have been attending planning board meetings for 13 years. Over and over, the developers and the people with money got what they wanted, and the rest of us have to put up with no trailers, our gardens and creek-crossing war staff, and whatever else was left. So the people without money don't come here to speak. They do care how things go. They care a lot, but they know it won't do any good to speak to you because they don't have money, and only the people with money get what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who, we've gone through everyone on the list except for the folks who I think are interested in speaking during the public hearing. Any other members of the public wish to address the Board during public comment? All right, thank you. All right, we have a couple of proclamations that we want to present. The first one is Older Americans Month proclamation, and Commissioner Al Whitesides is going to read the proclamation. And I believe Jennifer Teague is here to receive it, and perhaps with others as well.
Well, it's a pleasure for me to give this one, especially since I'm the only old American on the Board. You can see I need these, too. Older American Month, whereas Buncombe County is home to over 78,000 older Americans over the age of 60 who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community, thus benefiting the economic, social, and cultural well-being of Buncombe County. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners and partner agencies recognize our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas Buncombe County can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage participation in work, civic, and community life, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services that support aging in place, embracing the diversity of older Americans in our community, and emphasizing the positive views of aging and acknowledging that all of us are aging. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older neighbors, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their community. And assign Brownie Newman, Chairman, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Now, who would like to speak?
On behalf of Buncombe County Health and Human Services, the Division of Aging and Adult Services, Age-Friendly Buncombe County, and the 78,000 older adults that reside in Buncombe County, I thank you for recognizing Older Americans Month.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being with us. We appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, the next proclamation is the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month proclamation, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards will read the proclamation. And I believe Dr. Noriel Armstrong is here to receive it. Is that right?
All right. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Buncombe County is committed to reflecting the concerns and needs of the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of Pacific Islanders, East Asians, South Asians, Southeast Asians, and West Asians. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a significant role in Americans' history with their enormous contributions to science, arts, industry, government, and commerce. And whereas traders from the Asia-Pacific region reached North America as early as the 16th century, but the first significant wave of immigration began during the late 1800s. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month originated in a congressional bill in June of 1977, on March 28, 1979, President Carter issued Presidential Proclamation 4650 proclaiming the week beginning on May 4, 1979, as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week. And whereas the month of May was selected as it honors the immigration of the first Japanese residence to the United States in 1843. And whereas while May also marks the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in 1869, constructed by the labor of mostly Chinese immigrants, we recognize Chinese laborers were paid lower wages than their white peers, and some faced physical abuse from their supervisors. And whereas the population of people who identify as Asian or Pacific Islander in Buncombe County is just shy of 2%, the artistic, culinary, and educational contributions are immeasurable. And whereas we are also aware of and deeply concerned about the dramatic increase in the violent and hateful crimes and incidents targeting AAPI communities. And whereas through our values of respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity, we honor AAPI individuals and stand in solidarity with the AAPI community as we work to dismantle systemic racism. And whereas a vast diversity of languages, religions, and cultural traditions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders strengthen the fabric of American society and our Buncombe County community. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners proclaims May 2023 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and urges our community to join together in celebrating our residents of Asian and Pacific Island heritage and making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. Signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman.
BK Wesley, just on, I want to thank you all for this proclamation, and as the equity sponsor for the county, and on behalf of our Equity Inclusion Work Group, thank you for the proclamation and for supporting our equity efforts across the county.
Thank you, DK. Appreciate you. And thank you, Commissioner. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the FY23 Third Quarter Financial Quarterly Report, and Mason Scott, county's interim finance director, will present this item.
Good evening. Tonight, we are walking through the third quarter financial report for the current fiscal year. Information presented will be as of March 31 of this year. Our point-in-time reference for this discussion is 75% completion of the current fiscal year, so we're comparing revenue and expenditure activity to that 75% benchmark, but we understand that not all activity aligns to our standard fiscal cycle. The numbers are unaudited, but we generally don't expect any future adjustments to be material to the discussion that we would have tonight. Our standard items for review are the General Fund, which represents the primary governmental operations for the county, the Solid Waste Fund, which is the county's primary business activity, and investments, which represent the cash management activities of the county. There are additional funds and related information discussed and provided in the full report, which is included in tonight's agenda packet. So starting with the General Fund revenues by type or revenue source, the Expanded Budget Equation is in the upper right corner. This shows our amended revenue budget for the current year is just under $386 million. The appropriated fund balance for the year is approximately $23 million, totaling just under $409 million for the complete amended budget. As of March 31, revenues had been collected at 81.6% of the total budget. If we exclude the appropriated fund balance and consider only revenues we expect to actively collect this year, we've actually reached 86% collection of amended revenues. Starting from the left of the chart on the screen, the county's top three revenue drivers remain property tax, sales tax, and intergovernmental revenues. The property tax, of course, is our main driver of revenue. 98.2% of current year budget was collected as of March 31. The current year collections equal $235 million. This is 2.5% or almost $6 million more than the same time last year. Sales tax is at 49% of budgeted collections. This is one exception to our point-in-time collection rule, so remind you here, sales tax are on a three-month lag as far as distribution from the state. So where we would expect everything else to kind of be at that 75% mark, nearly 50% is right in line with what we anticipate for sales tax at this point in the year. Current year's sales tax distributions are $23 million. This is 8% or $1.8 million greater than the same time last year. Finally, intergovernmental revenue is a mixture of restricted and unrestricted state and federal funds, which are primarily used to offset certain program expenditures, primarily Health and Human Services revenues, and these revenues are generally timed to match the expenditures that they support or offset. 70% of these revenues were collected as of March 31. There was a slight lag against the 75% point-in-time reference. $34 million is the collection for the current year, and this is 4% greater than the $33 million same time last year. Medicaid Hold Harmless has bolstered the revenue stream this year for this fund, contributing approximately $4.8 million in unrestricted revenue this year. Moving next to General Fund expenditures by function. General Fund expenditures, the functions represent major groupings of governmental activities. As of March 31, we were at 67% of budgeted expenditures. That equates to $275 million of our $409 million total amended budget. Across all functions, we are slightly ahead of spend for the same time last year, except for Human Services, where the spend is still within 1.5% of the same time last year. We are tracking behind our 75% point-in-time reference by approximately 7.6%, which represents roughly $31 million. But as of March 31, approximately $13.5 million, or around half of that gap, had been obligated across all functions for future payments. Moving on to General Fund expenditures by category, so a look at the same 67% of budgeted activity organized by type of spend. Our top two categories of spend are salary and benefits and program support. Salary spend was at 70% of budget as of March 31. This is $118 million, which is about 11% or $11 million ahead of the same time last year. Program support spend was at 74% of budget. This equates to $98 million in the current year, which is about 6.5% or approximately $6 million more than the same time last year. Other expenditures, which you'll see to the far right of this chart, represent capital activities, payment of debt service, and transfer to other funds. These expenditures are roughly 10% or $41 million of the total amended budget. As of March 31, just over $20 million of these commitments had been paid. So at the close of the third quarter, total revenue collected in the General Fund outpaced total spend by just over $58 million. Moving on to Solid Waste Fund revenues by type or revenue source, the Expanded Budget Equation for this fund shows $11.6 million in anticipated revenue activity this year, $4.4 million in appropriated fund balance for a total amended budget of $16 million. Actual revenues collected as of March 31 were approximately $8 million or 51.9% of budget. The percentage collected increases to nearly 72% when you compare the current year collection activity to budgeted revenue, not including the appropriated fund balance. Sales and services, which are the landfill and transfer station tipping fees, are primary drivers for revenue in the Solid Waste Fund. Almost 70% of budgeted sales and services had been realized so far this year. This is $7.6 million collected of approximately $11 million budgeted. This number is still behind that 75% point-in-time benchmark and approximately $300,000 less than the same time last year, but I think this number is a little more representative of anticipated activity in the fund. Next, we have Solid Waste expenditures by category or spend activity. Expenditures in the fund were at 44.6% of budget as of March 31. The primary spend drivers in this fund are salary and benefits and operating expenditures. Salaries make up around 25% of the fund's overall budget. Only 65% of budgeted salaries had been paid as of our snapshot for today's discussion. Salary spend is ahead of this time last year by about 8% or approximately $200,000. Operating expenditures are found in the center column grouping on the slide. That is the primary driver of spend by activity for this fund, and they make up roughly 50% of this budget. Only 40% of that budget, or $3.3 million, had been spent as of March 31. So as of March 31, total revenue in the Solid Waste Fund outpaced total spend by just over $1 million. And our last slide is a high-level snapshot of the county's investment portfolio. We maintain roughly 80% of the county's cash between the North Carolina Investment Pool and the North Carolina Capital Management Trust. The remaining 20% is managed by a contracted investment advisor, with our investments held primarily in commercial paper and treasury notes. Our investment strategy is aligned with general statutes and best practices and emphasizes liquidity, security, and maintaining the value of each dollar. Are there any questions regarding third quarter financial status?
I don't think there are. Thank you. Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on cryptocurrency mining. And Nate Pennington, the Buncombe County Planning Director, will get us started on this item.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. I just think I'd like to give a brief summary for the members of the public today, and then we can go right into the ordinance itself. The item before you is a moratorium. Another way of saying that is a temporary pause for the land use identified as cryptocurrency mining. Brief history here, I think a number of you have been contacted by members of the public or residents that have been concerned about the land use itself. It is sort of an emerging technology. It is something that we're seeing across the United States that other communities are dealing with. We presented before you all in a briefing, and we also did a call for a public hearing recently to introduce the public hearing tonight, which is, in fact, the moratorium. The action you would take tonight is the approval of an ordinance authorizing a moratorium. To be clear, what this does tonight is 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes allows you to basically put in place a temporary pause for a specific land use. Not all land uses are allowed to take advantage of this provision, but this one specifically is, and there are some other communities that are evaluating things as we speak right now. North Carolina General Statutes, and I'm just going to run through these four items because I think there are some speakers on this item. You have to do a series of statements. One is you have to identify the issue that you're seeking to address. There have been some concerns as it relates to the mining operation, its use of electricity, noise, design standards, those sorts of things. There needs to be a definition of what constitutes the cryptocurrency mine itself. That's defined in the ordinance. You need to identify the duration of the time we're seeking. In this case, it's a one-year pause. Just to kind of catch you up on stuff, today we had the planning board review the comprehensive plan. That will appear before you all on the 16th for a public hearing. The reason that's important is because we're putting in place a pause to allow us to craft standards in tandem with the passage of the comprehensive plan. And finally, you need to identify next steps, and what we're saying here in the ordinance is this one-year pause gives us time to work with residents, planning board members, to craft standards for the newly defined use. We've previously talked about the American Planning Association publication that's available that other communities are looking at, and this also gives us time to benchmark with other communities and see what standards we might want to put in place. That being said, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and I'm also doing this in tandem with legal because we don't often bring a moratorium to the table. I'm here in the background if you have any questions.
All right, thanks, Nate. All right, should we open the public hearing? So I will do so. I'll call the public hearing to be opened at 5:31 PM. There are a couple of members of the public that have signed up who I think want to speak during the public hearing. I'm going to go through that list. If there are other members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing, everyone who wants to speak will be given a chance to do that. And you'll have three minutes to address the Board. The three-minute policy still applies during the public hearings, right, Mr. Frew? Correct? The three-minute policy still applies during the hearings, yes. So you have three minutes to speak during the public hearing. You'll get an orange light when there's about 20 seconds left, and then a red light will indicate when your time's up, and we do ask that you discontinue your comments after that so everyone can have the same amount of time. And the first person that signed up, again, apologies if I mispronounce your name, is Michael Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes, sir. All right, come on up to the podium. Thanks for being with us.
I have a copy of my remarks.
Okay, you can share them right here. That's fine.
Good evening, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to come and speak today about this issue. Crypto mining facilities are really warehouses filled with stacked computer servers. They're nothing particularly new. They actually, from the outside, look very much like a power substation, a large power substation. I've actually included a picture of the one that's in Murphy, North Carolina, so you can see that. Asheville in Buncombe County, as our planning director, has said, "We're fortunate to have other communities and towns that have already located mining facilities or have initiated pauses in order to consider what they might do." I want to call your attention to really four issues. One is extract- One is extraction of value from our community. Another is jobs and taxes, and the finally soaring power bills. Crypto mining in terms of extraction, I think the first thing you always hear about that, and when I think of extraction here in Buncombe County in Asheville, I think about the degradation of our environment, in particular its beauty and its value as a destination for tourists, relaxation, parking, camping. The cryptocurrency factor factory will usually generate about 95 decibels on a 24-hour, seven schedule. And this, again, comes from Murphy, and I'm sure all of you have followed the news from Murphy and the complaints of people there and its impact on the community. Murphy, North Carolina resident Mike Lukowicz appeared on Fox and Friends to discuss his concerns about the crypto mine in Murphy, North Carolina. And he quote, I quote him, and he says, "The noise is insane, and if you're on the mountaintop above the crypto mine, it's even worse." I don't know if there's anything much we can do about it right now, but what we're trying to do as a community is to get it out to the public that if you see crypto mines coming up in their area, they need to do everything possible to ban them. I want to switch for a minute to Plattsburgh, New York, and simply say, that's it.
I'm sorry. Your time is up.
Well, I ended at a good point. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. All right. Chris Joyell.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Chris Joyell. I'm the Director of the Healthy Communities Program from Mountain True. I want to thank you for being proactive on the issue of cryptocurrency mining. Mountain True has seen several cryptocurrency mines operating in western North Carolina, especially in Cherokee County, as gentlemen before me just mentioned, where they have proven to be a nuisance to neighbors and a threat to our environment. Crypto mining, especially proof-of-work currencies like Bitcoin, require vast amounts of electricity to solve the arbitrary and increasingly complex mathematical puzzles needed to mine new coins. The miners' banks of high-power specialized computers and fans needed to cool can cause significant noise pollution and electronic waste. They also consume massive amounts of energy that would otherwise be used to heat and cool homes and to power far more socially and economically beneficial commercial and industrial activities. There is no way to greenwash crypto mining. Even if miners claim to rely on renewable energy, their operations are still hogging energy that we need to meet the county and state carbon reduction goals. Let me repeat, as the value of Bitcoin rebounds, the growth of cryptocurrency mining operations put North Carolina in danger of not being able to hit the goals set out by Governor Cooper and the North Carolina General Assembly with House Bill 951. Therefore, I urge Buncombe County Commissioners to adopt this moratorium in order to determine the best way to protect our community and secure a better climate future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Craig?
My name is Craig Deutsch, and I have lived in Buncombe County for nearly a decade. I have watched Asheville grow from a little town to a small city. I met my wife here, I started my family here, and I bought my first home here. I want to see the county make educated policy decisions in order to grow our town consciously in a way that is mutually beneficial to residents, industry, and local economy. My goal today is to open the door for further conversation before the county enacts policy that stifles innovation and preemptively limits industry. I watched the briefing where the mining moratorium was introduced, and I was encouraged by the Commissioners, who stated that they didn't know much about the subject. It made me hopeful that the county will approach this topic with curiosity. That being said, I do not believe that the county looked at alternative solutions to a moratorium before deciding that this was the only path forward. The statute requires that this board state what alternatives to a moratorium were considered and why those courses of action were not deemed adequate. How did you look for alternatives? Did you speak to any Bitcoin miners or people in the Bitcoin industry? There are a plethora of resources about the positive impacts of Bitcoin and Bitcoin mining out there if you know where to look to find good faith studies, and many people who are knowledgeable about the subject are more than willing to take the time to educate. It seems to me that this moratorium on Bitcoin mining has come about thanks to widespread national news coverage of one particular mine in Murphy, North Carolina. The news coverage not only contains wildly inaccurate claims about how Bitcoin mining works, it's not solving complex math puzzles, but also glosses over the two other mines in Cherokee County that the neighbors don't complain about because they use sound barriers to attenuate the noise. Did the Commission reach out to any of these miners who are operating in a way that is not disruptive? The moratorium mentions e-waste as a concern, but machines from 2017 are still in use, and new machines also last for many, many years. According to the EPA, there is a total of around 40 million tons of e-waste disposed of each year, and a critical study found that Bitcoin contributes less than 0.1% of all of that. The moratorium also mentions greenhouse gas emissions. Bitcoin mining computers do not emit any greenhouse gases similar to electric vehicles. Commissioner Wells has been quoted as saying that mines don't typically create many job opportunities, but the Nebraska Public Power District would say otherwise. They recently testified in the Senate about Bitcoin mining being a boon to rural communities. One site has had an economic impact of $65 million, brought about 200 associated jobs, and $5.5 million in tax revenue. I urge the county Commissioners and planners to take the time to visit Bitcoin mines, do research about Bitcoin's benefits to the environment, such as powering mines from once-flared natural grass or deconstructed waste tires, as Commissioner Sloan has mentioned, and listen to stories about the positive impacts of Bitcoin for underserved and underbanked communities. At the end of the day, all Bitcoin mining computers do is run code, and code is a form of constitutionally protected speech. I am hopeful that Buncombe County will follow in the footsteps of states like Georgia, Arkansas, and Wyoming to encourage innovation and bring new industry to the area, or at the very least explore alternative options to a moratorium that will only discourage business in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's everyone that, excuse me, that signed up. Are there other members of the public that would like to address the board? Sure, you can come first, and then you can go second after her.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Stonebreaker, and I have lived in North Carolina since 1999. I am here as a buyer, holder, and user of Bitcoin. I passionately believe that Bitcoin will help to restore the American dream and will bring monetary freedom to the world. Bitcoin is important to me, and miners are important to Bitcoin. I'm here today to ask you to look beyond the narrative attacking Bitcoin mining and consider other alternatives to a one-year moratorium. Bitcoin has been in the news since its creation in 2009, but I passed it by because the narrative said that it was for money laundering and drug dealing. It wasn't until 2020 that a trusted friend introduced me to the reality of Bitcoin. But even then, I listened to the competing narrative that it consumed too much energy. Finally, I did my own deep dive, and the narrative is a distraction from the truth that Bitcoin is about making money better for everyone. They want us to believe that inflation is only 6%, but every time we pay for something, we know the truth. Inflation is at least double that. U.S. debt is at $31 trillion. Endless money printing will continue to devalue the dollar and drive inflation higher and higher, robbing us of our life's savings. In contrast, Bitcoin is a store of value that cannot be devalued and inflated away because it has a fixed monetary policy and its capped supply of 21 million. We hear in the news that another bank has failed or is on the brink, and we learn that the banks don't actually have our money in their reserves. We hear the system is one bad rumor away from a bank run and is inherently unstable. With the Bitcoin network, I can directly hold and control my own money and don't have to trust the banking system. We hear stories of how banks cut off access to people's accounts because the government doesn't agree with their message. Someday, someone in power may not agree with my message. Bitcoin cannot be censored or confiscated. I control it, and I can transfer it directly to whomever I please. It is being used by missionaries in Muslim countries, refugees in Africa, women in Afghanistan, and immigrants in the U.S. to send remittances. Bitcoin is run by rules and not by rulers. It is equitable and just, and it is open to all. It includes the marginalized and people that have historically been unbanked. Around the world, Bitcoin is allowing people to control their money for the first time in history. The miners secure the Bitcoin network by competing to write a transaction on the ledger. They, along with node operators, protect the value of all the Bitcoin and the integrity of the network. Bitcoin users are diverse in ethnicity, ideology, socioeconomically, and gender identity, and are estimated at 22% of the U.S. population and growing. I urge you to keep an open mind and consider alternatives. Noise can be mitigated, water is recycled, e-waste has been overstated, and miners are creating a more sustainable and robust energy grid. Also, you've been provided with a book called Bitcoin and the American Dream, which was written to advise you as policy makers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Justin Orkney, a full-time resident in Charlotte, North Carolina for the last three years. I wrote some reports that I emailed to you, so I'm happy to hand them out as well. So I'll speak to them here in a moment. So I'm here today to talk about the benefits of Bitcoin mining with respect to integrating more renewables and preventing blackouts. I urge you to refrain from passing this one-year moratorium before us tonight. I've been in the electrical, the electric industry for nearly 15 years, starting in 2007 in rooftop solar out in Arizona. In 2013, I joined the local electric utility, scaling rooftop solar programs, demand response programs, customer technologies, including batteries, smart thermostats, and electric vehicle chargers. I was recruited to join Duke Energy in 2019. For three years, my role at Duke put me at the nexus of new technologies, rate designs, system operations, demand response, and customer programs. I worked hard to ensure a safe, reliable, affordable, and clean electric grid for our customers, not just in North Carolina, but also South Carolina, Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, and Florida. I currently work for Standard Power, an infrastructure-as-a-service company building out Bitcoin mining data centers in rural America. I'd like to take a brief moment and brief to describe how electricity remains reliable, and forgive me if I'm repeating something that you already know, but at every instance of the day, electric generation must be balanced with customer load. As we see the increasing build-out of intermittent renewable generation sources, system operators are losing control over the generation source. However, at the same time, electric utilities are presented with the opportunity to partner with customers to manage load. This is referred to as demand response. However, not all customers and end uses of electricity are created equal. Hospitals, grocery stores, sports stadiums, large corporate data centers like Facebook, Google, and Amazon are unlikely to curtail their operations when needed, and many residential customers would probably feel the same. Bitcoin mining is unique, dynamically beneficial as a customer to the electric utility for three key reasons. It's scale agnostic, right? It can be built up in 3.5 kilowatt increments. You could have dozens of miners. You could have 10,000, thousands of miners. It can be location agnostic. It can go anywhere. It can go to rural America. And most importantly, from a grid perspective, it can be time agnostic, and that means it can be shut off at any particular hour of the year. This makes Bitcoin mining the perfect partner to integrating more renewable energy on the grid. I am currently, this report right here, is an executive summary of a study with one of the largest electric utilities in the country on how to strategically integrate Bitcoin mining into the grid and further their decarbonization and reliability goals. During this, and then just with respect to the Christmas Day blackouts, I know it's important for you guys.
Time's up.
200 megawatts of Bitcoin mining.
Time's up. Please stop.
If there was 500 more, there wouldn't have been blackouts.
Please sit down. Please sit down, or you'll be asked to leave. Thanks. All right. Any other members of the public? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Thank you for having me. My name is Dennis Fasoliotis. I am the founder and president of South Carolina Emerging Technology Association. South Carolina is a trade association for emerging technology as well as the founder of South Carolina Blockchain and Enterprise Business Design specifically for site location and event planning. I responded to the memorandum supporting the document with a memorandum opposing, you know, the document in its various locations. I want to just run through some highlights of that. I've already presented it, so you have it on file. Specifically, I want to reinforce the fact that Bitcoin mining specifically does not produce any greenhouse gases itself. It uses a mixture of the grid, you know, that everybody else uses. You don't distinguish whether it's fossil fuels or whether it's nuclear, or whether it's hydro, whatever the case may be. Bitcoin is the leading, is the industry leader in sustainability, has almost a 6%. The last report by the Bitcoin Mining Council, which is an international consortium of Bitcoin miners, you know, reported we had just under 60% of a sustainable energy mix. You know, there's been reference to the e-waste associated with it. My colleague Craig Deutsch has referenced that in the past, previously, noting that 40 million tons of e-waste are generated annually, reported in the EPA study that's cited in my note, in my memo. Less than a tenth of that is e-waste associated with Bitcoin mining. You know, the industry, and I really want to make one correction. Mr. Orkney corrected me earlier that, you know, the retooling cycle for this can be anywhere from five to six years. I mentioned four years, but it is far above the one year that was presented as testimony to the Commission. Noise and other impacts are already addressed in the noise ordinance in Buncombe County, and it specifically exempts industrial and commercial use. So obviously, you know, that's just something that needs to be handled on a case-by-case purpose. It doesn't necessarily require, you know, an entirely new land use plan. You know, the one item that we really are asking you to be cautionary of and to avoid a statutory violation is to explore other opportunities. I mean, you know, the drastic measure of moratorium, you know, is only, if there were applications already on file, you know, we might understand that, but the reality is that there aren't, apparently it was reported, there are no applications on file. You know, so the opportunity here for the county to actually create a task force, you know, that could study this and on a countywide basis, and how you implement a technology policy in rural parts of Buncombe County, is very important. I included in my package the supplementary document, you know, proposed sites in the incorporated areas. If we studied that a little closely, I think you'll find, you know, where you could isolate these opportunities in the unincorporated areas. You know, but a number of reasons, you know, the memo does not support the memorandum.
Your time's up. Your time's up. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
I'm Ken Bream. I live at 15 Morningstar Drive, Lester, North Carolina. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club as well as myself. There's three reasons I support this moratorium. We've got to get it right. First of all is noise. That's called a couple of times, but I have worked with some of the residents near the mine in Cherokee that have had to sell their homes because of noise. I live in the rural part of the county, and, you know, we live out there for a reason. We like being outside at night or being outside during the day and not hearing constant roar and loud noises. If one of these are situated, it's going to be in the rural parts of the county, as the gentleman said, so it's going to take away our quality of life. So we need to take the time to figure out what regulations, what management we have in place to prevent that from happening in neighborhoods like mine. Number two is solid waste. In Cherokee, when they put that one in, they ended up having 30 containers of styrofoam that ended up in the local landfill and created some major problems for their landfill. We don't need to shorten the life side of our landfill. But thirdly, and probably most important, Bitcoin mines are our energy hog. It's estimated that they use enough energy in the United States to power 900,000 homes or as much as the state of New York. You were smart enough to pass a renewable energy goal, and as part of that is reducing and conserving energy, not dramatically expanding the amount of electricity we need to use to make that happen. I live, you know, it's kind of a rural area. We have a garden, and every now and then we get a groundhog that shows up. And groundhogs go straight for the garden, and they don't share, as my wife puts it. They eat a lot of the stuff. So I had to put up fences around all raised beds to keep the groundhogs out. We're asking you, as a county, to take this year, study the moratorium, and put the right fences up to protect us and our quality of life and our energy usage in Buncombe County. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Ken? Ken? Lamar had a question. It's Ken Bream.
And groundhogs go straight for the garden, and they don't share, as my wife puts it. They eat a lot of the stuff. So I had to put up fences around all raised beds to keep the groundhogs out. We're asking you, as a county, to take this year, study the moratorium, and put the right fences up to protect us and our quality of life and our energy usage in Buncombe County. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Ken? Ken, Lamar had a question. It's Ken Bream. All right. Anyone else? Any other members of the public wish to address the board during public comment? All right. Well, we appreciate everyone who came out and took the time to share their perspective on the issue and who addressed the board during the public hearing. I will adjourn the public hearing at 5:54 p.m. And Nate, is there any additional information from the staff at this time?
Staff has no additional information. It's here.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions? Or is there a motion?
I will make a motion to support the temporary moratorium on the cryptocurrency mining as presented by staff.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to support an ordinance issuing a temporary moratorium on cryptocurrency mining. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. Thank you all who took the time to be here for consideration of the ordinance. All right. The next item on the agenda is the county manager's report. Ms. Pender? All right, no items here. All right, the next item on the agenda under Old Business is a review of open space bond conservation easement criteria for consideration. And Jill Carter is here to present this item. Jill's our open space bond project manager, along with others. Thank you all for being here.
Yes, so I am here today with my colleagues from the Ag and Land Research Department to present the revised evaluation criteria for conservation easement projects to be funded by the open space bond. These criteria have been revised based on feedback we've received from the Commission as well as the Advisory Board. We would like to ask that the Commission move to adopt this criteria tonight. Before my colleagues review the revisions to the criteria, I did want to give a brief update on the open space bond more generally. We have revised our process for the bond to include an expanded internal review. This internal review will not only include a financial and legal review of every project selected to move forward, but it will also include a cross-evaluation by the Affordable Housing Committee. This evaluation is intended to make sure that there is no conflict between the open space bond and the affordable housing bond. Additionally, we will have an evaluation of each project against the comprehensive plan to make sure that there is alignment with that plan, including the growth, equity, and conservation framework. And then as a quick status update, all of the advisory boards related to the open space bond have convened and have been briefed on the draft criteria. Additionally, staff has completed orientations with all of the members of the Community Oversight Committee, and that committee will have its first full meeting in June. And then finally, while the conservation easement criteria is the first to come before the Commission, we do expect that all of the criteria for each project type will be complete by the end of this summer. And with that update, I wanted to introduce Ariel Zeit, who's the Farmland Preservation Program Manager, to present the criteria.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So I'm here to update you on the progress that we've made since last time we presented the criteria to you in March. So at the last meeting, as Jill mentioned, there were some changes requested to the Agricultural Advisory Board Bond Ranking System. And so we have now incorporated those changes into our system. So just to recap on what those requests were, you wanted us to make sure we were evaluating the leveraged funding coming from other grant sources or private funds, evaluate charitable land donor donations, as well as removing the development pressure from the ranking system in order to avoid competing with the comprehensive plan and as well as to make sure our efforts are, you know, working well with our affordable housing bond as well. So here is the updated Ag Advisory Board Evaluation Ranking System. So where the development pressure section has been completely removed from our ranking system and has now been replaced with the funding and donation leverage section that you can see in the yellow box. So we wanted to make sure we were doing this in order to incorporate those two important pieces into the ranking system, and basically, all other sections of the system have stayed the same. So here is a recap also of the conditions that are required to be met for the Ag Advisory Board to recommend a project for easement purchase. So in addition to those criteria, we have made sure that we clarified that we want to make sure that at least two of the conditions below in the yellow box have been met. So this is basically the bond can fund up to 50% of the easement value after other funding sources have been explored. And this is really in order to encourage leveraged funding from other sources on these projects. In addition to that, we want to make sure that our landowners are donating at least 25 to 50% of their easement value in a bond-funded project. And so this is also to encourage that landowner donation value. So exactly the same for the Land Conservation Advisory Board easement purchase requirements. So they have to meet those different conditions, but the conditions in the yellow box are the same for both boards. So encouraging landowners to donate at least 25 to 50% of their easement value, and the bond can only be used to fund up to 50% of the easement value. So basically, since we met last, we have brought these recommendations to the Agricultural Advisory Board. We met on April 18th, and the board voted to recommend these proposed easement criteria for the bond funds. And then we also presented at the April Environmental and Energy Subcommittee, and the Subcommittee voted in support of these criteria as well. So really, the next step in our process is for the board to consider adoption of the easement criteria.
All right. Thank you so much. Great presentation. Commissioners, any questions? Or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the open space bond conservation funding evaluation criteria.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We do not have any items under New Business, so we come to board appointments. All right. First, under the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one appointment and three reappointments.
I'm happy to make a motion to appoint Destiny Burgess and reappoint Eric Robinson, Sylvia Clement, and Suzanne Avid.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. On the Mountain Community Capital Fund Operating Committee, we have one appointment. We have one applicant for that position, right? All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Dee Williams.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. The Library Board, we have two appointments. One of them needs to be from District 1, and one of them needs to be from District 3. We have four folks who have applied, two each from the two districts. That's correct. I'm happy to support those recommendations and these appointments. I'll make a motion to appoint Lena Stapleton and Summer Barto. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. And lastly, the County Board of Adjustments, we have one reappointment.
Motion to reappoint Joel Mezalas.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We appreciate everyone who applied and serves on our boards and commissions. All right, we have a couple of announcements. On May 9th at 8:30 a.m., the county Commissioners will hold a budget work session at the East Asheville Library, 3 Avon Road, Asheville, North Carolina 28805. On May 16th at 3 p.m., the Commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On May 16th at 5 p.m., the county Commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. That concludes all the items we had on our agenda for this evening, but we do have a need for a closed session. Mr. Free, could you explain the purpose of the closed session?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to General Statute 143, 31811A3, have two attorney-client matters to discuss with the board. One has to do with settlement authority on a general liability matter, and the second is an industrial commission case, IC number 23-1969, Katrina Williams versus Buncombe County. And we just need direction from the board on these matters.
All right. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So when we're finished with the closed session items that Mr. Free just mentioned, we will go back into open session, undertake no additional business, and we'll simply adjourn the meeting. We're in closed session.